Good morning, good morning. I want to welcome everybody to this morning's committee meeting. It is Wednesday, January 27th. We have one item that is a joint item, that's why you see Mr. Labange to my left, so we do have one joint committee hearing item, and that'll be with Arts Parks Health and Aging Committee, and of course, our committee. We're also joined this morning by Mr. Reyes. Good morning, sir, Mr. City Attorney. We do not have a quorum, so at this point, I'm gonna go through the consent calendar that's for HCED, and we will move all those items as a communique from the chair.
But you do have a quorum of the Arts Parks Committee, but not of HCED?
But I do have, okay, so then we can move forward with the other, the special item. Okay, with that said, Ms. Barclay, let's start off with item two.
Yes, sir. Item two is a report from the CRA and the CAO relative to executing an exclusive negotiating agreement with Millennium Westlake LLC for the Westlake Theater mixed-use project.
Okay, on item two, we'll adopt the CAO report. Item three?
Item three is a report from the CRA and the CAO relative to executing an owner-participation agreement with NoHo Senior Villas LP.
Okay, item three, we'll adopt the CAO report as well. Item four?
Item four reports from the CRA and the CLA and a resolution relative to amending the pre-development to permanent loan agreement with Clifford Beers Housing, Inc.
Okay, we'll adopt the CLA report on that item. Item five will continue that, bringing us to item six.
Item six is a report from the CRA and the CAO relative to amending grant deeds to terminate covenants which impede development of residential commercial projects.
Okay, on item six, we'll adopt the CAO report, and we've just been jan- uh, j- 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 j-anned, we've just been j- 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 j-anned by Councilwoman Joan Perry.
Joan Perry.
Joan Perry.
Yeah, that ju- anyway, we've just been joined by, uh, by Ms. Jan Perry. That brings us to item, item seven.
Not yet.
Uh, Ms. Barclay, at the request of Mr. Carganis, we're gonna continue item seven for two weeks. Mr. City Attorney, now we do have a quorum of the HCED committee, so from this juncture on, all the items will be action of the committee.
And if you would like to, whenever you feel comfortable, ask Ms. Perry if she wants to join on the items that were handled before she arrived.
Why don't we do that now? So if there, Ms. Perry, we've just gone through items two, three, four, six, and would you like to be counted as a yes vote, so we can move it? Okay, so that brings us now to item eight.
Item eight is a report from the Community Development Department and the CAO relative to negotiating and executing a contract with MCS Inc. and Century Business and Economic Development, Inc., Latino Chamber of Greater Los Angeles, for the 2009-10 Los Angeles Business Assistance Program.
Okay, we'll adopt the CAO report on that item. Item nine?
Item nine is a motion, Perry Parks, relative to authorizing the Board of Public Works to accept funds from the CRA for the south of Santa Monica Freeway Clean and Safe Program.
Okay, Alan, who's the maker of this motion?
That would be Councilmember Perry, sir.
So what is your recommendation?
Uh, approve.
Okay, you, you the man. Then on item nine, we'll adopt the motion, and item 12, we will continue. At this time, I'd like to go to the special joint, joint hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Reyes.
On number eight, if we can just have them report back on the performance, on number eight?
Okay, on number eight, if we can amend it to make sure that they report back to this committee where it relates to performance. Okay, so, Ms. Barclay, if you could read the joint item?
Um, item one is a report from the Community Redevelopment Agency and Department of Recreation and Parks and the City Administrative Officer relative to authorizing the submittal of statewide park development and community revitalization program of 2008 or Proposition 84 grant applications of up to $5 million each from the California Department of Parks and Recreation.
Okay, if we can get the department folk to come forward. And Dr. Williams, after this item, I will call you forward for public comment. Mr. Labange has to, has had a very important engagement in the district, so I'd like for him to be here as we at least begin the discussion on this item. Good morning, and, and, uh, don't everybody talk at once.
Patty Huber, Assistant CAO, I've been elected to go first.
Okay.
Um, it is with, um, difficulty that our office has recommended that we not apply for these properties for grants at this time. Um, we believe that, given the city's financial situation, um, and existing park programs where we have a significant, in our Prop K program, as well as already authorized Prop 12, 40, and 50 grants, um, that all have to be cash flowed, um, that we cannot support adding more projects that have to be cash flowed into our, um, situation at this time.
Okay, so let me, let me ask you a few questions, because I, I think every member shares the concern of the CAO's office. But-
Yes.
You know, if we are awarded these grants, what are the time restrictions in which we must spend the money?
Um, my understanding, and, um, the department can help clarify some of the timeframes for me, um, is that we have up to, um, three years to actually accept or enter into an agreement with the state, and then once we enter into the agreement, then we have five years to expend the funds.
Okay, so-
But my understanding is that, as well, a lot of these are looking at acquiring land for new parks, and the push would be to enter into those agreements sooner rather than later, in order to take advantage of what is a very good real estate market at this time, and we fully recognize-
Okay, Mr. McCray, I'll get right with you. Okay, but, so, we have three years to actually acquire this property, and then-
Enter into an agreement with the state.
So you have three years to enter-
Correct.
Into an agreement with the state, that's just to draw the money down, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, then after that, in the event that you're fortunate to, to, to get the agreement, then you have five years-
To spend the money.
To, to, to spend the money. So I think it's a little, it just, I think, and I want to see what the other members think, that's eight years from now, and I think that, um, it would be a mistake to, to, uh, just pass on the program. I think there are a lot of creative ways where we could acquire the property when you have the money and you can build passive parks or pocket parks that are, you know, little to no maintenance and things of that nature. So that's just what I think, and I want to get a feel for what the other members think, and I, and I think we should have a discussion about that. I'm gonna have, Mr. McCray wanted to say something, then Mr. Labange?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. John McCray, General Manager, Department of Recreation and Parks. We're talking about a grant program that's gonna come one time and one time only. For us, not to be good ancestors for the city of LA, because what, the benefits of this are gonna flow not just to us, but our grandkids, grandkids, grandkids. Now, I understand cash flow, and you know, as a department, I had both AGSD and now Wreckin' Parks, I'd never once been in the red, I've never once asked to have a bailout. We are no different than any other municipal government in the state of California, and not to quote, I have to quote the Bible, "If the aisle fends, he pluck it out. If the long pole in the tent is it's a reimbursable grant, let's put the pressure on the legislators to change it. Give them money upfront." Now, it's not just parks, we're not just gonna buy parkland, we're not gonna just put in buildings. This is immediate money that can be stimulus for job growth in this area. We don't have city forces building pools, or building gyms, or building parks. We do in some cases, but we flow this money out on contracts into our local community. Let's think a little differently about this. Let's put the pressure where the pressure needs to be put, so this money comes directly to us, we get immediate benefit on job growth, and we leave a legacy. We're not gonna be looked at as the people that didn't put parkland into this city. So I think we need to look at this a little broader, because my gut feel tells me that when push comes to shove, there's not a municipal government, maybe San Jose with their money, but that can really use this grant the way it's set up, and that would be my recommendation. I'd like to see us as a city municipal government take that position. We've never been denied a reimbursement on a legitimate expense. We know how to spend money and account for money, so don't hamstring us going forward, and that's-
Well, obviously, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Labange, Mr. McCray has, uh, been on a church tour in the African-American community, he's quoting the Bible, so from this point on, you are Reverend McCray, and, uh, in the event that we were unable to spend this money, what do you, amen, what do we, do we give it back? Or are we penalized for it? Are we thrown in debtor's prison?
My understanding is, we can always deny, if we are legitimate, we have 40 programs going forward, 40 applications, at that point in time, we can make a decision whether to accept the grant or not. We would not spend money on a program we can't spend on, but what we're talking about is making the applications now, getting into the queue for this $400 million.
Well, now for Mr. Wreckin' Park?
Well, Mr. Weston, thank you very much, I appreciate, I appreciate the, uh, passion that the CAO's representative spoke of, and, uh, all of us here, and but a few of us are not, uh, city people here, we're going into a very dark time, but I also appreciate the passion that Mr. McCray said, and as Mr. Weston said, this is a, an eight-year, uh, timeframe that we could look at, where you actually drop it. I know we all may personally plan things in our own lives, and try to budget our own families, and then to last minute, either we go for the, uh, fix it to the roof, or we wait till the next year. I think we should be aggressive in trying to get grants anywhere. If you go back eight years, we're just in the shadow of 9/11 and the great uncertainty, we came out of it, although with challenges of this economy now, but eight years is a time, is a cycle. I think we miss an opportunity to create, as John said, for grandchildren, and I do appreciate your passion, because I know it was extremely difficult for you to say-
It was an-
What you said.
And it was an extremely difficult decision-
Right, Patty.
Miguel is, you know, thought long and hard about it-
Right.
Because he believes in parks, in the value of parks, as do I, as do my staff. This was not an easy report.
And I would like to add that, uh, this does come as a surprise, I've also been involved in these discussions with the CAO, leading up to their report. I just took the other opinion that we should proceed. I understand-
I got that, but as a representative of the chair of a committee, I think we gotta go through the process. At some point, if we are not able to actually purchase the ticket to take the flight, then we stand at the gate and we let the plane take off, or whatever the analogy would be. I was trying to get to heaven, but not through the way of the Bible.
[laughing]
Not that I'm not a man who believes in all things, so, okay.
And I, and I just want to say that, uh, I think all of us, and I know I can definitely speak for myself, I've known Miguel for a long time, and I have the highest respect for him. Uh, I, I just disagree with him where it relates to this item. I think Mr. Reyes is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, uh, thank you, Councilman Labange, and, uh, be careful, Sister Mary Rosemary's gonna be listening, so-
Yes, yes.
But, uh, I do want to emphasize a couple of things. My understanding is that, uh, this fund cannot be used for maintenance anyway, that, so, the arguments I'm hearing about what we need to do with parks, these funds would not apply anyway, so, when you look at the areas that are being focused upon, they're very park poor areas, and I think the broader picture is, if we can create magnets for improvement, if these parcels become parks, uh, and, for example, Lincoln Heights Albion, it's a underused industrial piece of land, and a very park poor area with a swimming pool that's practically under a bridge, that kids can't get to. The linkage of that park to that, those pools makes a huge difference, that's been a very bad situation for generations, and so making this move does have an amazing impact. Now, if with the eight years factored in, uh, given the work of the CRA, and the ancillary impacts of all the other economic development strategies, I could see in the next two, three, four years, that we would find a strategy to maintain and keep up these parks, because that would be our charge, to create a relationship that pulls in the private sector and brings in the nonprofits, so that at least you have the base, which is the piece of land. Everything else that goes with it, we can form partnerships, MOUs, the local businesses, and this is the direction we're going in terms of developing sustainability. So it's not just a hollow word, everyone uses it all the time, it's lost its meaning, but the fact is, we do have these relationships developing, and I think the strategic move is a very crucial one. Uh, as bleak as things may seem, we have to keep thinking of creative strategies that will make this change in the near future, so, uh, I understand, Mrs. Santana, again, I understand where he's coming from, uh, but I think we will be in a position to force other relationships that haven't had, have not occurred, and that we can develop those strategies and maintain these parks and do what we need to do. Uh, there are some main changes that are being considered, and, um, but I'll leave that to later. Uh, I know there's one in my district, and I think there's others in other districts, so, I would support, uh, the CRA, uh, and the, uh, position that we move forward with these grants, and that, uh, we work together with Mr. McCray, knowing that he has this mission, so do we, and figure out ways to support him in these very, uh, turbulent times, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and before I call, uh, Ms. Perry, you know, I, when, when I served in the legislature, you meet with all kinds of people, and I remember one day in my district office, a group of people came in and they indicated, and I may have changed slightly since then, that the district that I rep- represented had the highest rate of obesity in the state of California, and I think a lot of that can be attributed to the fact that we are park poor. Uh, the, the, the one huge or big park that we have, the, uh, the Kenny Hahn, uh, Park, when the, uh, the, the weather's nice, if you don't get in there before 10:30, there's no place to park, and so, and I can't remember the statistics, but it was something crazy, like, for, there's one picnic table for every 15,000, it was just, you know, ridiculous. And Mr. McCray, I do think you kinda touched on it, it's not so much for us, it is for our grandchildren and their grandchildren, and we, we have to be good, do the best that we can to be good caretakers. Ms. Perry has some questions?
Um, no, I didn't have a question, I had a comment, um, and I appreciate, again, what Miguel has said, and I think that sound advice based in logic, but the difficult issue is this, uh, you know, especially in areas that are underpowered, uh, it's often difficult to find, find private investment dollars to go in and create the amenities and the assets that we need to create, uh, so to be able to compete for grants is something that comes around every now and then, not necessarily on a regular basis, and so it's a, it's a, it's a messy business, uh, to be able to build for the future with public dollars and through a competitive process, and so, um, you know, I, I would, I'm going to support moving forward on these applications, and then put out a challenge to the council members in whose districts these central parks are located, as I have on Central Avenue. You get out there, you start a project any way you can, with basic money, tax credits, whatever you can do, and then you have to fight all the way through, uh, from beginning to end, to make sure that it gets fully funded and it gets built. We talked now about, uh, the greater need, because of our budget issues, for public-private partnerships. This may be a tremendous opportunity for us to be able, maybe to work together collectively, I don't know, to create some kind of an opportunity where we can go out as council and seek more private, uh, uh, support-
I can do it.
To subsidize whatever public awards we might be able to obtain, but, uh, there's no better time than this to be able to compete, and, uh, I certainly plan on-
So you could be all-
Joining my colleagues and taking that opportunity.
Okay, yeah, we're, uh, before we get there, there will be some amendments, uh, Ms. Barclay will read some, I think Mr. Reyes has some as well. To all of you, I want to thank you, but I have one public comment card on this. Tori, if we could make space, and Tori, I'm gonna let you say your last name, 'cause, no, no, you're gonna get a chair, come on, yes. Now, you can identify yourself, 'cause I didn't want to mispronounce your last name.
Thank you, good morning, my name is Tori Chair, and I work with a nonprofit organization called The Trust for Public Land, and we are actively pursuing a number of grants under this program, and I just wanted to come and say that we support the Department of Wreckin' Parks in pursuing these grants, we think this is an excellent, and probably we may not get another opportunity like this in the near future for the city of Los Angeles, and as a city that ranks the 11th worst in park space in, in, uh, in this country, I think this is an excellent opportunity for us to boost our acreage of park space, increase quality of life for many residents, especially in areas of the city that don't have access to parks.
Thank you. One more, uh, comment from the public, Lou Calanche. Come on, Lou, I want to vote on this before Mr. Labange leaves. Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity. Um, again, my name's Lou Calanche, I'm the Executive Director for Legacy LA, and we're partnering, we have a 50-year partnership with the city and Wreckin' Parks to develop the Hatchet Park Armory. I urge you to support, um, this, um, proposal, um, this will have, this, um, our project was started by a community effort supported through foundation grants, and, um, this money will help to renovate an abandoned building that would bring a lot of recreational opportunities, um, to an area that's really underserved, but partnering with a nonprofit helps, uh, Wreckin' Parks in the sense that we will develop the, the, uh, fundraising, sustainability plan, a maintenance, that would, um, not, you know, incur more of a burden on Wreckin' Parks. So I think this is a really good example of Wreckin', Wreckin' Parks partnering with nonprofits to allow these projects to really happen and to be sustained over a long period of time. So, um, I thank you for, um, hearing, hearing me, and, um, hopefully you support, um, these proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. You, Lou, you may be the one that just pushes us over the edge in the right direction. Anyway, with that said, uh, Ms. Barclay, we have some amendments, and why don't you read the recommendation and the amendments, and then after that, let's, uh, hear from Mr. Reyes, we'll add his amendments to the record.
I believe Mr. Reyes has the name changes and the changes in the composition of-
So then, Mr.-
Let him go first, yeah.
Mr. Reyes, then you should go first.
Okay, so, therefore, move that the city council support the proposed projects submitted by the CRA, Department of Recreation Parks, and Los Angeles Neighborhood Initiative, and add the Vision Theater Cultural Center, and then the Park, the Buddha Con, Little Tokyo Recreation Center Park, to continue list previously transmitted to city council for approval, and further move that the list of proposed projects, parks, to be submitted, to be revised to include these two new part, projects, and that the names of some park projects be revised as follows, Northern Avenue Elementary School Park, Orton Mayo Street Park, Ramon Gage Gateway Park, Olympic and Grand Vineyard Park, and Slauson Wall Park. And further move that city council adopt resolutions that authorize the, the submittal of applications for statewide park development and community revitalization program 2008, Prop 84, grant funds from the California Department of Parks and Recreation for the combined revised total of 35 proposed park projects, and delegate to the General Manager of Recreation and Parks and Chief Executive Officer of the CRA, City of Los Angeles, the authority to negotiate, sign, and submit all documents necessary for the completion of the grant scope, should any grants be awarded, including grants in excess of $250,000.
Thank you, yeah, and, and Mr. Labange has one additional. Mr. Labange?
And, and amendment for the project, there's no amendment for any, uh, city projects list proposal, but on the CRA list, that the project at Sixth and Hobart, uh, which is 550, 554 South Hobart, be forever known as John Ferraro Park, named after the former councilman of the district. So they'd be listed as John Ferraro Park in the application that comes to city council.
Mr. Weston, I have one for that, too.
Ms. Perry?
Uh, I just wanted, I, I know Mr. Reyes meant to say combined list, okay, so, and I also wanted to substitute attachment one of the CRA report reflecting the correct list of parks and appropriately corrected resolutions, which I believe the clerk and the CLA have copies of already.
Okay, well, I see Ms. Barclay shaking her head, looked like affirmative. Okay, Ms. Barclay, let's wrap this up.
You're okay with me, too?
Yes.
Councilmember?
Yes?
Our office would make one request, um, is, because obviously, if these projects are awarded and we receive the grants, we're going to have to start to deal with the cash flow issues and so on, and under that, we're requesting if these projects, if they're awarded, that they become under the purview of our LA for Kids Steering Committee, so that we can then begin to manage that process, um, as well as, um, direct our office to work in that context of that committee which we chair, to look for alternatives for cash flow that are, do not include MICLA or the Public Works Trust Fund.
Nah, yeah, that's okay, that's okay. Ms., where did she go? She disappeared, that's fine.
We just think we're gonna need to manage-
No, I agree.
And we have an existing policy-
I agree with you.
I agree completely.
I, I agree with you. Okay.
Okay.
Labange, are you hassling?
No, I'm not.
Just clarifying.
That one right there.
Oh, okay, sir.
That one right there.
Great.
Security, let's keep an eye on Mr. Labange.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Sorry, I was clarifying.
There's Harold Henry Park and a Robert Burns Park, both former council members, and Silver Lake, who's Herman Silver was the councilman, so they, there's a little tradition in the fourth.
Yes, sir. Sorry about that.
He's disruptive.
So, it's also my understanding that, um, the-
I love you.
Part, on item number 21 on the list provided to the clerk, um, new park 3670 Wilshire Boulevard needs to be removed from the list, and, um, so the final recommendations of the committee would be to approve the recommendations and adopt the resolutions contained in the Wreckin' Parks report as described by Mr. Reyes dated, or as amended by Mr. Reyes, dated, um, January 25th, 2010, to authorize Wreckin' Parks to apply for Prop 84 grant funds and receive and file the Department of Recreation and Parks report dated January 6th, 2010. Approve the recommendations and adopt the resolutions as amended by Mr. Reyes, contained in the CRA reports dated November 19th, 2009, and December 18th, 2009, and to apply for the Prop 84 grant funds, instruct the Recreation and Parks Department and the CRA to notify the council if any funds are awarded, and report back to council prior to acceptance of any of the Prop 84 funding awards, with a finalized scope and cost estimates for the maintenance and operation of the parks awarded. Also, it may be, just to be plain, um, a good idea to receive and file the CAO recommendations at this time, just to-
Fine.
Address every report on the file.
Fine, and without objection, that will be the order, um, unanimously approved by the joint, uh, committee. Yes?
I'm sorry, we neglected to give a name change for one of the Wreckin' Parks projects, if we could be authorized to do that.
We can submit that information to the city clerk, can't we, or, you wanna, do you have it now?
Name of the project? Yes, just, um, Project 24 on the list, uh, says Synthetic Field, we just want to remove that, um, the scope is still being finalized.
Okay.
Okay.
You've got that?
Yes, sir.
Then, without objection, that will be the order. The, uh, joint, uh, committee hearing is closed. Thank you so much, Mr. Labange. Um, now, um, Mr. City Attorney, that leaves us with, uh, item 10 on, uh, the regular committee agenda. I will ask, Mr., before you read that, Ms. Barclay, I'm gonna ask Ms. Dr. Williams to please come forward to give his public comment. Mr. Williams, wait a second till I, here, let me, shh, come on now. Labange?
Bye-bye. He's gone.
Almost, not quite. I want to wait till Elvis exits the building.
All right, we're clear.
Yeah, clear. Dr. Williams, good morning, sir.
Good morning. Uh, Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Burr Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Uh, we have a slumlord in Northeast LA, big time. More than 200 residences require permission from Caltrans to do almost anything. Many are subject to undocumented accusations and eviction notices. One gentleman is now on his third eviction notice, being fought in the courts. Why? Because he spoke out against this slumlord. He said, "Okay, here are the conditions in our area. They're wrong, and they should be rectified." However, Caltrans doesn't have the money, because what happens, much like the CRA funds, the money from the rents go to Sacramento, and seldom return to support the repairs and improvements that are- and improvements that are required by the houses. Shoddy work is done when it is done. It's, I say, more prevalent in the northern part, because they actually get repairs in Pasadena and South Pasadena. In Els Reno, south of Huntington Drive, eh, benign neglect. If you want it done, you have to do it yourself. Thank you very much. But there's also a report that there is a regulation ordinance that was passed by the city council many years ago, that exempted Caltrans from any code enforcements. So people are told, hey, you can complain about it, but you're never gonna get it fixed, because the city will not enforce it. We're trying to find this rule, this ordinance, and yet, as yet, we have not been able to locate it. So we would appreciate if any of your staff could provide us with the code enforcement ordinance related to Caltrans in Northeast LA. Thank you.
Can somebody get that for him, Ms. Barclay?
Sure, I can work with the Housing Department.
And did you submit a list of, do you have the actual addresses of the property? Maybe you should submit.
We can provide that.
You should.
If we have a contact person.
At this point, we'll use Andrew Westhall.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Barclay, that brings us to item ten.
Yes, sir. Item ten is a report from the CRA and the CAO relative to amending its, the CRA's fiscal year two thousand and ten budget for additional carryover resources in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven million dollars.
Okay. Is somebody here to discuss this issue? Don't sit in the back. Come forward, and if you could identify yourself.
Steve Valenzuela with the CRA.
Zena Huang with Office of CAO.
Okay.
So this request brought to you today is a request from the CRA to recognize additional anticipated, unanticipated carryover in the amount of one hundred and twenty-six million. And the purpose of that is to reappropriate prior year funds into the current fiscal year. There's also a request to amend the budget in approximately eighty-five million dollars in accordance with Assembly Bill Twenty-six for X, and that's for the CRAF or ERAF payment. And this year, the CRA is request, or has been obligated to pay seventy point nine million dollars for their O nine, ten CRAF payment. So that's due May of this year, and that's going to go to the state, or that's in accordance with the Assembly Bill Twenty-six for X. And there's also some additional budget amendments that have been requested, and that's for the CD nine, our redevelopment project area. And those are from development opportunities, commercial-industrial budget line items, and then those will go into public improvements and commercial-industrial.
Okay, thank you. Before I call on Ms. Perry, Mr. City Attorney, can't we do item ten and eleven together?
If they're related, yes.
Okay, so, Ms. Barclay, I should've had you do item eleven as well, so why don't you read that, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Perry, who has a statement, question, something.
Okay. Item eleven is reports from the CRA and the CAO relative to various actions to transfer eighty-five point four million dollars to the Los Angeles County Supplemental Education Revenue Augmentation Fund, as required by California Health and Safety Code, section thirty-three six ninety and thirty-three six ninety point five. The CAO report addresses both items ten and eleven.
Okay, Ms. Perry?
Um, I had a couple of points I just wanted to make for the record, for both ten and eleven. When the CRA reports back to the committee on the California Redevelopment Association lawsuit against the state regarding AB twenty-six, I guess it's dash four, I guess, I'd like to get a report back on the five point three million in positive resource variances, and I would like to know what the source of this new revenue is. And I'll give you copies of my notes, so you don't have to write it so fast. I also want to state for the record that I support the CAO's recommendation for the redevelopment agency's ongoing contribution of five percent to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And I strongly believe that the CRA's commitment to the trust fund should remain. I realize that these are very challenging budget times, but we need to support programs, continue to support programs like the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which has a very good track record. And finally, I understand that the redevelopment agency and the Housing Department are currently negotiating a master cooperation agreement for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And I want to encourage the redevelopment agency to remain committed to the trust fund. I know this agreement will go before committee next week, but I thought that it's very important that I put my thoughts and my position out on the record now, so when they come back next week, there's no surprises if they have a different outcome. Just aware of how I'm going to vote, what I'm gonna push for.
Mr. Reyes with his little nifty mock turtle or sweater.
It's just a shirt.
Ozzy, what was it? Ozzy in here. Ozzy Reyes.
I don't have any pearls. When we speak of this master agreement, how aligned is it with the five-year plan that was put forth by the Housing Department? Can that be answered at this time, or is that a report back?
So, Lila Sotella, our Deputy Chief of Operations for Housing, I think interests that, Mr. Councilmember.
Good morning, councilmembers. It's perfectly aligned. What we're trying to set up, and you'll hear about it more next week, is setting up an ongoing relationship with the Housing Department for the next five years, so from two thousand and eight to two thousand and thirteen.
Could you, in your report, demonstrate that alignment?
Um, yes, we can, we can show our ongoing contribution. Again, it's dependent on resources, but yes, we can, we can show that alignment.
Right, because I know the Housing Department left with certain assertions and a strategy for the next five years, and that personnel happens to be sitting in a very important place in Washington, DC. So I think that alignment and what they perceived then, and what they perceive now, needs to be understood, so that we don't paint ourselves in the corner when it comes to how we appeal to those higher authorities. Especially when they have their hands on the pressure rings. So that, to me, is a critical message in how we're moving forward. So I wanna understand how that was presented then, and how are we presenting it today, given this agreement?
And the way, when we established the program, the five-year housing plan, we were all around the table, and we all talked about it. So the CRA participated in that, as well as the Housing Authority and the Housing Department. So we're all part of that.
Just so that I can assure that we are going down that path, that's something I would like to see in writing. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Barclay, did you by chance hear Mr. Reyes refer to Washington, DC, and that we have a former city employee that's the high-ranking position there? Were you listening?
Yeah, I did hear that.
Did you, did you see that the other day, the Lakers were in Washington, DC?
No, I missed that one.
Okay. Then if there are no more questions or concern, then without objection, we'll adopt the CAO report. Is there any more business before this committee?
No, sir.
Then this committee is adjourned. Thank everyone.
I know, huh?